We have everyone, we have one alternate here.
I have all these USB drives over here. I don't even know what's on them.
Oh, these are the minutes that I need to sign here. Okay, so I need to look at the...
All right, Chair, it is six thirty.
All right, it is six thirty, okay. All right, it is six thirty PM and I'll call the Planning and Zoning Meeting Commission to order on, let's see, today is what the, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five? All right, and we'll do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and justice for all. All right, and we'll, Mr. Gallardo, if you can take attendance, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Diaz?
Here.
Commissioner Colgar?
Here.
Chairman Mata?
Present.
Commissioner Ru?
Present.
Commissioner Martinez?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Present.
Commissioner Yonell?
Present.
Okay, very good, and, uh, let's see. Did you make note of the alternates that are present now and making sure we have that squared away? That was an issue in our council meeting yesterday. All right, yeah, yeah, oh yeah, you were there last night. Okay, very good. Um, I guess the first item here is approval of the minutes. Have we all had a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes, I did.
Any issues?
Yes, I did, and I have a concern that, um, former Commissioner Mary Fernandez had resigned before the meeting, but she was listed as absent. I'm not sure what the proper protocol for that is.
It's just an administrative error, we'll leave it.
Okay, then fine.
Very good, all right. Should I not sign these yet? Do we need to reprint it, or?
Reprint it.
Okay, all right, very good. Okay, um, all right, so I'll entertain a motion on those minutes for approval?
I move that we accept the minutes as they're presented, less with the provision that we make that amendment to remove Mary Fernandez as being absent.
Can I have a second? All right, very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it, any nays? Thank you. Let's see, so, old business, discussion and possible recommendation for updating and amending chapter. Crystal, did you want to speak before we got to this, or no?
No, so finish reading it.
Okay, all right. For updating and amending Chapter fifteen zoning, Article fifteen oh two zoning ordinance, Division seven permitted use table. Um, Crystal, or Mr. Gallardo?
Yeah, no. So, good evening, Commissioners. Um, so there's a couple of things this evening, so if you're here for four point one and dealing with John Marshall High School, um, the notice that was sent out, um, the first notice that was sent out went to the neighborhood and it was about plating the property in order to continue on with the project. Um, but underneath it, we described the project that was happening, and in that, we listed as, uh, we listed a street Redbird instead of Robin. And so a corrected notice was sent out subsequent to that notice. Um, we did consult with our city attorney. Our city attorney said we were under no obligation to renotice because the notice didn't have anything to do with the project itself, it had to do with the plat. So this evening, you're discussing the plat, you're not discussing closing the streets, the council's already voted on that, we have the new John Marshall, this is just the plat for John Marshall. So if there's anybody here this evening, this is just discussing a replat to the property at John Marshall, this has nothing to do with closing a street, moving the street, that's already been decided on and the council's already been voted, so there seems to be a little bit of confusion in regards to that. So that's, uh, statement one. Statement two, um, for item four two, if anybody is here for the hookah lounge, this commission will not be debating or hearing that item this eve, or hearing this item at all. Um, an SUP, um, if you take a look at the packet that was provided to you, um, we did provide kind of what happened. Essentially, what happened was, we thought that the item was going to have a BYOB, and under the BYOB provisions, they would have needed an SUP. They currently are not asking for BYOB operations, and they're currently not serving alcohol. If they start to serve alcohol, they will be, they will, um, have to apply, depending on their hours of operation, they would have to apply for an after-hours permit. Um, and so we will not be discussing the hookah lounge this evening, there's not going to be a conversation about the hookah lounge, they are allowed by right in the building that they are in. Um, they are going to be a cafe slash lounge. Um, if any resident wants to have a conversation with me, I will be out in the lobby, we can have a conversation about it. Um, but y'all will not hear from them on that item, and y'all will not be discussing the item at all. We still had to place it on the agenda because we noticed for it.
And we're not, we're not, obviously not taking a vote on it either, there's not any action taken.
You're not voting, you're not discussing, you're not, when you get to that item, it is, you're gonna just say, this item has been withdrawn. That's, that's always...
Don't even, don't even read that item, just, okay.
You're just saying four point two has been withdrawn. So there's no discussion on it, um, or any of that. Like I said, we can talk about that item outside. Now, the permitted use table, that brings me back to the item that you're currently on. Um, your, your task this evening, or the task that y'all gave y'allself at the last meeting, was to review the permitted use table, and this is kind of a good example of that. Um, hookah lounges don't have a permitted use, and so depending on what their subsequent use is, depends on what they qualify for. And so what came up was Lev Hookah Lounge, back in two thousand twenty-one, um, was going to be a lounge bar club situation, and, and so those of the residents that are here that remember that what happened with that, it did get out of control, they were subsequently shut down.
That was located where?
Um, at Warsbach.
Yeah, that's right.
Um, but that one did require an SUP because it was listed as indoor entertainment, they were gonna have a DJ, they were, it was, it was a club, you had to pay for bottle service, it was a whole different thing. Um, indoor entertainment, the uses for that, probably about six months ago, was changed, um, by an interim planning and zoning director at the time, changed the, um, uh, uses for indoor entertainment. So now an SUP is not required for that use. So if that Lev Hookah Lounge were to have come up now, it still wouldn't require an SUP now. So right now, they're listed according to their documents as a cafe, so they're gonna fall under the restaurant café provision, and they're allowed by right and B two. So we're not gonna hear the case, they're allowed by, I mean, they have to follow certificate of occupancy, the rules and all the regulations, smoking regulations and that stuff, um, and if they do get their liquor license, then, and they're gonna be open after a certain amount, uh, a certain timeframe, they would have to apply for an after-hours, um, an after-hours permit. If they're gonna allow BYOB, that's a separate provision. From our understanding, they're going to be a cafe, and so they'll fall under restaurant at slash allow hookah in their facility. So that's why y'all will not be discussing it this evening. We did consult with our city attorney, they think, he thinks that this is the right move, um, and because it's on the agenda though, um, uh, because it was noticed, that's why it was put on the agenda, because we still have to place it on the agenda, but y'all aren't gonna debate it or discuss it this evening.
So, according to the Open Meetings Act, if it's listed as an agenda item, do we have to, in some way or another, open it up for?
No, nope, you're, again, you're not explaining, you're not debating, it was a staff error, it was placed on an agenda, and it wasn't poor Michael's fault, it was, you know, Michael just got here, and so, you know, again, you know, I'll take full responsibility, I review the agenda items, I didn't catch it, I was thinking Lev Hookah Lounge, Lev Hookah Lounge needed SUP, didn't, I didn't snap to me, didn't even snap to Melinda until we started kind of looking at it and realized, oh shoot, they're not that, they're not a club, they're not having a bottle service, they're not, they're not having
Right.
the same type of, according to them. Now, if that changes, like I've had, so I've had people tell me, oh, we're gonna be, um, a convenience store, and we have provisions for vape shops.
I know you brought that up last night, certificate, certificate of occupancy issue.
Correct, and as we started going through the certificate of occup, it, what, they weren't a convenience store, they were a vape shop. And so that's, they have very different provisions, they can't be within two hundred feet of, you know, XYZ, and so, uh, he subsequently lost money. Same thing with kind of like the Bell Bonds situation, right? So, um, again, it's one of those things that, um, we do catch it during the certificate of occupancy phase, if they're lying in any way, or misleading in any way on their application, we typically catch that during the certificate of occupancy process. And so, um, if there's any misleading information in that, if he's going to be another Lev Hookah Lounge, where they're gonna be open all times at night, I mean, they were open, Lev Hookah Lounge was open from two AM to six AM.
I remember that, yeah.
And so it was, it was a different type of crowd, you were getting the after-hour bar, people were leaving the bars and going there, and then, because it was BYOB, um, but they, if you, and then if you brought your bottle in, they were charging you for your bottle that you brought in. So it was, so it was, it was a very, very different dynamic than what's, um, what this business is illustrating that they are going to be, and so, again, they're allowed by right, and because they're allowed by right, y'all cannot have a discussion or a debate, because they're allowed to be in there, they would just move on through the, the process.
So, I, I think it'd be good, I don't know how many of our citizens are, are here because of this particular agenda item dealing with the cafe or the hookah lounge, and if so, can you just reiterate what that means to the public, and if they're here to speak about it?
So if they're here to speak about it, like I said, um, y'all are gonna still have to go over the permitted use table this evening, and that is, that is a topic of conversation, you might want to add its own use, like a smoking lounge, even like, so I think you should probably, because it's not anywhere in there. The other thing that's becoming a thing, um, is, is like, um, cigar, cigar lounges, where people go and smoke cigars. Um, we don't have that either, and so maybe there is a, maybe you add another use, as we discussed, a smoking lounge, or a, um,
Cigar club.
cigar club slash hookah place as a permitted use, and then you determine which districts or which, um, zoning districts you're gonna want that in, B two, or if you're gonna require an SUP for that, um, that kind of thing. I was gonna say poker club, but those fall under the gaming provision, so, but more cigar shop is another prime example of that. So as you're reviewing the permitted use table, um, or how you're gonna decide to move through that process, so y'all should have reviewed that, you know, over the last month or so, or three weeks or so, and if y'all decided y'all wanna break that up, or how y'all wanna handle going through the permitted use table, that's something you can consider. There's also, you know, replication, or like, if you take a look at bars, there's bars in there multiple times, I know Ms. Kroger mentioned to me earlier, like plant nursery, nursery, there's multiple of those in there. Um, so either cleaning up the definitions for that, or deleting them and combining some, um, and then other uses that maybe you don't see there, like the hookah lounge or cigar lounge, that you decide you want to add to the permitted use table. Um, so that will be the discussion that y'all are gonna have on the permitted use table, y'all aren't gonna finalize the permitted use table tonight, y'all are just gonna determine a process of how you're gonna digest the permitted use table, and so as y'all are discussing that, I'm more than happy to meet with any resident out here in the lobby to discuss that item if they're, if they're unclear.
Okay, very good.
Okay?
Very good. Appreciate it, thank you, Crystal.
So if you're here for the John Marshall, it's just the plat, um, and so you're not here to discuss street closures or any of that.
So where do we get that information from?
The street closure stuff, that was held two public hearings ago on ten twenty-one.
So can we have a recap?
Let's, okay, so who's here for the John, I'm just gonna take a poll, who's here for John Marshall? Okay, who's here for hookah lounge? Okay, I'll meet with you out there, let them do permitted, he's the applicant?
He's the...
Okay, so let's, um, they're gonna go through the permitted use table as they have that discussion, when they get to the John Marshall, I will give you a recap.
Awesome, thank you.
There you go, it's now yours.
All right. So as we discussed in the October meeting, um, council deleted sustainability and, uh, commercial industrial overlays, and then the commission was tasked with reviewing the permitted use table.
The new state, yeah.
So, um, as you mentioned earlier, uh, Mr. Hernandez did email everybody regarding some suggestions that he had, however, he, he kind of jumped the gun a little bit, he didn't, um, provide recommendations on to how you guys were gonna be tasked with that. So basically, what we're trying to solidify tonight is whether you guys decide that you're gonna create a subcommittee, whether you're gonna divvy up the pages to different commissioners, or how you wanna go about that. So again, keep, just keep in mind that this is something that we wanna have, uh, for the January meeting, which will take place on, um, January twenty-seventh.
Yeah, I think that's the goal we were shooting for, for having it completed by then. Um, I know we, we spent a decent amounts of time talking about how to go about this. I don't think we, did we not care for the idea of the, um, the subcommittee? Did we feel like that? Do we see any use for that, like, I think, I think efficiency is probably our, our biggest concern, trying to get this done, and, and, you know, by January, um, so, I don't know. Any suggestions? Oh, yeah, yes, you wanna be recognized?
Yes. I think that one of the problems we could have if we ever divvy this up by page, is that on different pages, there are items, shall we say, that may really refer to another page. So we have convalescents sent to a nursing home, and then on another page, we have something similar. I can't remember which it is now. Um, we have, yeah, I think it could be difficult, so maybe we could sort them in some kind of order, I remember I said that and I didn't do it. Um, sort them in some kind of order, so it, so like items are sort of grouped together, and then we can proceed to divvy up by page. That's it.
Mr. Yonell?
Well, it's been some ti, it's been some time since I, I'm going through this, but I don't see how we can do it by breaking everything up, like she says, you get to end of one page and there's an item here, but there's something else. So, um, how about if you just start going through the items, and maybe we begin to get a feel of how we wanna do it? I mean, right now, I'm in the dark, I have no idea. Ms. Kroger had a very good suggestion.
The dividing?
Huh?
The divide and conquer, last time?
Yeah.
Well, the only thing that I, I saw when I was reviewing this was the fact that it, it has things throughout it that seems like it was kind of cut and paste and put in, for example, animal clinic, animal shelter pound, and then further down, pet grooming, pet store. I know it's slightly different, but, I mean, it's almost like there's things scattered throughout, it's not just in that one section, or within, some of them are triplicate, some of them, plant nursery has four different settings on there, you know, so I think we need to really look at it, uh, from the standpoint of possibly subcommittees, and look at it from there, because I think if you divide and conquer, the only problem with that is that there's something somewhere else that, that lists that same thing, and you're like, why, you know?
And I think Crystal brought that up at the last meeting, that it's not so cut and dry, the way it's, it's divvied up, so, um, gosh. Would you guys be against? You know, that's the problem, we're, we're right in the season here, and so if we're shooting for January, which I don't know if we all thought was very realistic in the first place, trying to get this all done by January, but maybe we should do like a workshop. I mean, I know, I know that's a bit of a pain, right, but, um...
This is not the time of the year to...
No, definitely not, so I'm, if anything, well after the new year, if we did something like that. I just don't see us getting much done in a meeting like this. I, I don't know how y'all feel about that, or, yeah, Mr. Diaz?
Mr. Chairman, um, does it have to be done by January?
I don't, I don't think you...
No?
I, I think, you know, Crystal brought up the point that, what was the last issue we were looking at that kept getting postponed, and before we knew it, I think a year had gone by, I'm forgetting what that was, that we were tasked with reviewing, that, yeah, the sustainability overlay.
We are, you said, just like you said, we are in the season, you know, uh, I'll be out from December the eighteenth, and I don't come back till December, January the fifth.
Yeah, right.
So, uh, I think it's probably in our best interest to start this up in January with the goal to present to council March.
March, yeah.
Is that it, is that, does it have to be within a certain March, April?
We wanted it sooner rather than later, but if y'all wanna do a workshop, like a roundtable, like, we, you can also make a recommendation this evening to do a joint workshop with the council to review the permitted use table, if that's something you wanna do, we've done that before, like where we did a whole, like, I would, I don't wanna call it a SWAT, because that's so nineteen eighties, but just kind of sat down and like, uh, you know, hash out some of y'all's concerns, maybe, and so you kind of get the council's input, and it's open to the citizens, that kind of thing, if, if that's something y'all wanna do, um...
And ultimately, these, these changes are recommendations, I mean, council's still gonna...
Correct.
Yeah, so...
Correct. And then it's gotta still be ran by the city attorney and stuff too, to make sure that we're okay there as well.
Right, right, yeah.
I, I'd like to just see us do a workshop with ourselves, you know, ourselves and, and, and our liaison, and just hash it out January, February.
Yeah, okay, maybe late January.
We go page by page by page, and then, uh, set a goal to where we go through half of it, and then next meeting, we finish it, and then we bring it to council.
Uh-huh.
I, I, I think that would be probably the best interest, that we all are here, we all ask our questions, we all do our thing. Um, I don't know if we're opening to the public, or whatever, workshop or something, I don't know how that works, I don't, I don't know how that works.
It's not an actual open meeting, is it? But it would be open to the public, right?
It's open to the public, and so, um, if y'all, like I said, we can do it, like, um, you could do a whole workshop where we'd break it up, like we would take, hey, whoever shows up, open workshop, joint meeting, and you'd break it up, you'd say, this group's gonna go over here and do the first ten, you're gonna go over here and do this, you're gonna go over here, and y'all are gonna look at the definitions or whatever, and then we come back as a big group, and we, um, there could be no changes, there could be some changes, and, um, you know, and that we always preface that, just because you have it, doesn't also make, doesn't also mean that you need to make changes, like, you don't have to touch every piece, there doesn't have to be, you can go through it and just say, look, uh, these are the three things we wanna see, you don't, you don't have to do it in a workshop format, you know, but you, you may want to, we can do it at the conference center, um, and do a workshop there if that's something you wanna do. Um, it's just a matter of like, how you wanna, how you wanna do it, we do, you know, like I said, it, I mean, it's, it's currently being used, it's not like we don't have a permitted use table, um, I do like it sooner rather, you know, than, I don't wanna wait till, I don't wanna be here this time next year having the same conversation, right?
Yes, and, and then, yeah, spring break and all that, it's so, be good to get, get something done within January, February timeframe, and...
I recommend we do a workshop in January, a workshop in February, split it in half, and, and do as much as we can in January, do as much we can in February, and take it to council in March.
So you, so y'all can certainly do that, the, the question then becomes if, if we get other items, kind of like, you know, if you have multiple items on the agenda, you know, do you wanna hold those workshops separate days, right, not on a regular zoning commission day? So if you wanna do one in January and one in February, that's fine, but I wouldn't advise y'all to have a workshop the same time you have a meeting, you're just adding, you're doing two special meetings.
Yes, keep, keep the meetings, our meetings and a workshop separate from the meeting.
So would that be a, like a Saturday?
No, you can do it in a week, it doesn't have to be Saturday.
Oh, okay, I, I, I think of workshops, and I think the council does like Saturday meetings. No, I understand that, I don't think any of us wanna probably give up our weekends, but...
Mr. Chairman, six thirty to eight thirty?
Yeah, like on, yeah.
Six thirty to eight, six thirty, eight thirty.
And if it's at the conference center, it wouldn't interfere with any of the other meetings going on.
Can we just have it here in this room?
What? You could, you could, you're just, you're open to the general public, so I don't know how many people, now they care. Uh, we do, I have meetings in there, and we post for, in there all the time, and I sometimes have five people show up, and they just sit on the wall, and they, they can kind of speak at their time to speak. Sometimes I don't get any people for those types of meetings, so it just kind of depends, but yes, you could be in there, we could go...
I recommend that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'm liking that. Mr. Yonell?
Well, when we decide to get down to what we're gonna do, how are we gonna do it? Are we gonna just, say, for instance, where the first one's adult daycare, do we all say, well, that's a good one, that's a bad one, we don't wanna have that, or how are we, how are we gonna do this?
I think Crystal brought a good point of just like, okay, a group of two people go off and deal with that, and, and then, you know...
Is just because we like it, is that the thing we, we're going by? I mean, I'm not expression enough in all this to know...
No, I, I think, I think we probably are, are...
Right, you don't, you don't have to handle it that way, you can just, you can just sit as a group, and we can say, what, start at the top, like, and just kind of go down, adult daycare, like, it...
Somebody explains it?
Right, if you don't understand adult daycare or the definition for it, we're happy to provide insight. The thing about it is, is that then it becomes a staff-generated situation, right? Like, I can go back and we can make our changes, and I don't even need to come to you. Like, I mean, if that's the way you wanna handle it, if you wanna direct staff to just come and make recommended changes, and y'all stay out of those provisions, and we can certainly handle it that way. You know, you don't have to do a workshop, we can just go make our recommended changes and bring it back to you. The reason, though, that we get slapped sometimes for doing it that way is like, we're just, you know, water stamping with the staff.
Trying to push things a certain way, yeah.
Push things, and so we wanted y'all to take a look at it with fresh eyes and provide input to us.
Well, and I think we all come with our, if we had to be honest, we all come with our biases and things that have affected us in different ways, and we're probably gonna be focused on, on those. I think this, this second item dealing with the hookah lounge, I mean, yeah, obviously, we're, we're seeing that play out, so we're probably gonna end up spending time, and trying to avoid the complications and the, the issues that come about between the elected officials and I guess the citizens is probably what we should be working towards resolving that, yeah.
And my question is, will we have somebody there from the staff, and I know, Mr. Gallardo, you're probably gonna be there
Correct.
to entertain the questions that we have, like, why, and what's the historical aspect on this, and how did this come about, and why is this defined as this, and this is that? And then he could bring it back to us later at the next meeting, you know, that's, that's basically, I, I, I know that you're not gonna have the answer to everything of the, the day that we asked, but at least, you know, um, research it and figure out, you know, how did we, how did we get here?
And that's a starting point, for sure.
Exactly, mhm.
I, I know Melinda's about to, she's about to retire, but she's probably been here longer than anyone, so I'm wondering if...
You gotta, you gotta cut the cord, man.
I know, no, well, but yeah, Mrs. Kroger brings up a, a good point, I mean, the history, right, is knowing what, you know...
So, of course, so if we were gonna have workshops, something I'll work out with Melinda, um, to come in and kind of help with uses and stuff like that. Um, I, you know, Melinda is getting ready to retire in January, and we, I've had multiple conversations with her, um, and so we would have to work around her schedule, because she's no longer an employee, I can't just make her be here, and so, um, but, uh, we could definitely work out a separate day in January, and a separate day in February, outside of your zoning commission meeting. Now, if you have no cases, it may just be okay to hold it on that day.
Uh-huh.
I'm just saying, in case you have cases, you might not want to do both at the same ti, at the same night.
Okay, all right, so, we're not necessarily taking any action on this tonight, or, or voting on anything, so where, where are we at? Should we just?
Make a recommendation?
Okay, all right, in a motion form, do, is that Crystal's should, yeah, okay. All right, I will entertain a motion.
I'll award it.
Yeah, that's the thing about it, trying to keep it simple.
Look, I'm gonna, I'm gonna award it for you, and then somebody will just say, as presented, okay? Uh, so, uh, the, the motion is, the motion's going to be that you're gonna have two subsequent workshops in January and February, dates to be determined, to go over the permitted use tables.
I second.
You're not gonna second, you're just gonna say, I make a motion as presented.
I make a motion as it's presented.
I second.
There you go.
All right, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Ayes have it, all right, very good.
I wiped that out.
All right, so, at this point, we're gonna move to new business number four, presentation, public hearing, impossible action to approve a, a vacate and, and replat of lots fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen in Block A, all of Lot twenty-two in Block C, and all of Lot twelve in Block D, CB fifty-nine oh seven, Montiroblis Park subdivision, to create a new lot nineteen in Block A, and new Lot twenty-three in Block C, Marshall High School subdivision, being a thirty-five point six, six acre tract of land known as eight thousand Lobo Lane. Mr. Gallardo?
Okay, so, um, yeah, so the, the, uh, for, for the members of the audience, they've asked for kind of like a recap on how we've ended up kind of here. Um, back in the summer, uh, the city council reviewed options, or had a discussion with Northside Independent School District about how to move forward with, um, them doing a reconstruct at the front of John Marshall, and kind of rerouting the parent traffic, um, in the front of John Marshall, and opening up their parking lot. So that happened in July, the council gave direction to Northside and to the city staff on, uh, the way that this is going to be laid out. And so Northside Independent School District bought the land to the right of them, and so, in order to be able to expand their parking lot. So, um, and I don't know what parking lot's gonna be used for what, or where the kids are, so, um, I can't answer those questions, maybe Michael knows, but, um, they're gonna expand their parking lot, and part of that plan was that they're going to move Robin, Robin will be closed, and they're gonna move it over and make it all one drive. So you will...
So you will come in here and this will be all one John Marshall Drive. So that's all they did, was they moved Robin. Now, in the first notice, there were some, in the first notice, it said Redbird instead of Robin. So, um, it was a typo, that's all it was. And so we re-noticed. And so it, the re-notice says Robin. As the project description, y'all will not be discussing the move to this street at all this evening. I'm just providing a recap as a courtesy. That is not part of the conversation this evening. This is not, the council voted on this already, um, they voted on it, um, I want to say eleven-four, this was the first read, which was ten-twenty-one. Um, I think we've had about six meetings in regards to John Marshall construction of the front of the school and what's going on uh or what would be going on there. This is the second piece, which is the, which is the replat. So I'm gonna have Michael go over the replat. After y'all have a conversation about the replat, if there's still other questions, I'm here to the end, we can certainly have a conversation about that. You're welcome.
Okay. So as Dr. Caldera mentioned, we're here to discuss the replat for John Marshall High School. So, we're considering the replat, it's approximately thirty-six, thirty-five point six-six acres. Um, what's gonna happen is, once it's replatted, we're gonna create a new lot nineteen in block A and new lot twenty-three in block C, thus giving us Marshall High School subdivision. As we mentioned earlier, there is a, there's, they're proposing an additional uh parking lot on lot nineteen, and I'll have a better diagram for you soon. So, they're gonna also vacate a right away, which is Robin Road. And then lastly, they're gonna establish a a new right away, which is gonna be um John Marshall Drive. So basically, and I'll show you right now, John Marshall Drive is gonna extend into the school property, as before it was uh cut off on Eckert Road. So this is your aerial view here.
And the thirty, the thirty-six acre, I just want to make sure that I have a visual of that.
Sure.
Can you bring back?
Go back to the.
The previous uh aerial view.
The aerial thing.
I don't, I don't know if everyone else is also, because, I mean, Crystal said to the right side and there's the the church, Old Marshall Baptist, but I'm.
Oh, I read like when you're on Eckert, right?
Oh, when you're on Eckert, you're looking at the school.
Right, so right side?
Yeah, that's the perspective, okay.
Uh huh, right?
So, so if we look at.
Right.
Oh, right, the church is to the left, but the parking lot is to the right.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that's what I said.
Okay, okay.
So this is all, these are all the lots that are existing right now. But if this is the proposed, so you'll see that on the the road to the left-hand side, that's John Marshall and it cuts all the way across Eckert Road, okay? To the right of that, you'll see that uh Robin Road is no longer there. Okay? So if you look at this, you're you're now starting from the bottom, Eckert Road would be on the bottom, right? And on the left-hand side, that's John Marshall extending into the school campus. On the left-hand side, you'll see what used to be Robin Road. So in between John Marshall and Robin Road, there's a big parking lot, that's the proposed parking lot. That make sense?
I'm sorry, sir, but I'm lost.
Yeah, and is that currently where that softball field is? I'm also a little slightly lost as well, sorry.
Do you mind going back to the aerial, please?
The middle one, there you go.
Can you please go back to the aerial?
Sure.
In that aerial there, where is this new parking lot going? Can you, can you point it out?
Right in there.
Oh, okay, okay. So the softball field is right next to that, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay. So the parking lot is going there and you're closing, what what street are you closing?
This one right here, Robin Road.
You're closing that one, so you're gonna extend it to be part of the?
Parking lot.
Parking lot. Got it.
Right in front of the, it was like a fire station, a volunteer fire station or?
So how are people gonna get into Marshall High School off of record?
This is Marshall right here.
Mm-hmm.
And this is gonna extend across Eckert.
Oops, go back.
So this is, this is where it's coming from Marshall here. You're gonna cut across Eckert Road and it's gonna lead into the campus.
So the baseball field is off to the left-hand side?
Correct.
That's the baseball field. Okay.
And then, and then they created the parking lot on this side in between what used to be uh Robin Road.
Robin Road.
And this is still Bluebird.
So that Bluebird is where the traffic light is at?
Yeah, and they'll, they'll be coming out through there still.
Okay.
So remember, the entrance used to be through here, instead it's gonna be through here.
Okay, now my visuals, now I see it, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. If I can kind of show you that on this as well. Here's John Marshall, you're crossing Eckert here, John Marshall's going into the campus here. This is the newly created parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
This used to be Robin Road.
Okay, and that open space is the baseball field?
Correct.
Okay.
And you, and you just saw, pointed you referring to this, right? Yes, sir, Mr. Yonell?
John, John Marshall High School is at the bottom of this diagram?
On the, it would be at the very top.
At the top, okay.
Yes, sir.
So basically, we closed the road, we bought some land where the trees are. Where the road used to be is now parking lot, and we're creating a new road going in at the edge of the parking lot.
Correct.
So, yes, that is, but what you're, you're not discussing the road piece tonight.
I understand, you've got to know what it looks like.
I ju- I just want to make sure, I have to be very clear that the two items are held separately.
Some of these pieces don't match up when you try to put these pieces together.
Yeah, I I understand, I just want to, for the record, make it clear.
So, just out of curiosity, is all the construction we're seeing going on now, that has nothing to do with this restructuring of or this this replating, right? This?
Well, it does tie into it because once you create construction and and this, in essence, is expanding their footprint, but within their lots, but they're crossing over easements and things of that nature, so that's why they're required to replat.
Okay, all right.
So, as we discussed earlier, there was an error with the first notification. So when this was actually submitted, we did mail out forty-two, we actually got two in opposition of the revised version. And then remarkably, somehow, the, everything was delivered with the revised version. So, it should be forty-two, zero, two, and zero.
Two in opposition?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, sir.
We had the reasons they are opposing it.
Yes, so one of them was saying it was just gonna create traffic, the second one was saying that um they think that the project is gonna interfere with their water line.
Water line?
And it's not, it's just a misunderstanding.
I mean, there's, the, so this is, these, these are district engineers that have been contracted by by NISD? And I'm, I assume that they've?
We, we have engineers, uh, they're not district engineers, they're a private company and they're actually here today.
Okay.
If you have questions, if needed. Uh, so the fiscal impact is gonna be that, you know, the the project's been paid for, we, you know, through the district. The improvements are obviously gonna facilitate a safer use of the streets for faculty, students, and parents. So, I think the the fact that they widened the street and they added the parking lot contributes to the plat.
Do we, do we know if, like, was there, I mean, I find it hard to believe that, what, we've probably been talking about this for four, four years now, the traffic concerns, probably longer, I mean, with some of the longtime residents in in um in Monte Robles. I'm sure that, I mean, I'm I'm assuming the district took into account those concerns from, I mean, is that an issue that it's, that they feel is being addressed by this?
So, so I think that adding the new parking lot and expanding it through John Marshall Drive does enhance the the traffic pattern. I mean, it is gonna flow better. Uh, you know, you're not gonna, you're gonna actually have people that are gonna be able to utilize those parking spots instead of staying in line. So, they'll be channeled into the parking lot and so fl- traffic will flow for those that, you know, are are just passing through. They don't have to wait behind somebody that's waiting for someone else.
Okay. Very good, appreciate it.
So the replat is in, is in conformance with uh chapter ten subdivisions. Uh, lastly, the city engineer staff recommend approval. As I mentioned earlier, the engineers for the project and a representative for NISD are here present, if you have additional questions.
And again, we're just voting on
Approving the plat.
Approval of the plats, so there's not, I'm, okay, all right, well, I won't add any more to that. Any other discussion here on the dais? Questions? Do um, does anyone, do you guys feel that there'd be some benefit in hearing from the engineers of this project?
Might want to open up the public hearing and hear the concerns and then address your engineers, based on whatever concerns come from the general public.
Okay, it is seven eleven and I'll open up the public portion of this, this meeting? Yes, sir? You can come, come up to the the mic and uh identify yourself and where you live too.
Thank you, my name is Byron Woodworth, live in Monte Robles. Um, with all this work gonna be done, is is anything gonna happen at the intersections of of Redbird and Heebner and Chaparral and Heebner?
Doesn't look like, doesn't look like.
That's not part of this.
That's not part of this.
Not part of this, if that's gonna stay the same. Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that that has anything to do with the campus, with NISD property there, so.
Traffic is backed up all the way around the block on those two streets every day.
Right, no, I understand that and, yeah.
They're hoping that by diverting the entrance and having police out there is what they're saying that they're gonna do is that it's a little better. The engineers can comment on that if they, if they want to.
I mean, yeah, yeah, if you.
I don't speak engineering, but we, traffic plans were done, T A, uh, traffic analysis were done, so.
If you can identify yourself and who you're representing.
My name is Sean Smith with MTR Engineers, and yes, we have been working with the school district from the very beginning of this project. And it has been a long time coming, you know, upwards of four to six years that this has been in conversation. But from when we were engaged roughly around the time that they bought the property, uh, to get to the point that you see here on the screen, we engaged the City of San Antonio as well as the City of Leon Valley's staff to discuss our traffic impact analysis for this project, uh, to do a detailed traffic study. Um, everyone had their say-so in what intersections were analyzed, and we actually did analyze those intersections as well. And the mention of the the parking lot as far as being able to store traffic, there actually is a number of parking stalls allocated in the proposed uh configuration for parent pickup drop-off to utilize the parking lot in lieu of stacking on the public roadways. So the the TIA has been reviewed by both the City of San Antonio as well as City of Leon Valley's engineer. Uh, they have approved it and at this point in time, we, yes, feel confident with the proposed solution that it will reduce the traffic, not only on Eckert Road, but the circulation as well. And we've also diverted traffic away from the Bluebird Lane and the Eckert Road intersection as well.
So you do feel confident that uh the concerns more on the Leon Valley side with with Heebner Road and the residents of Monte Robles, that they're, they should see some relief from that?
Ultimately, it's up to you with the 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 parents and and the students on which direction they come to the campus, so we can't really tell them which direction to come to the campus. But uh if they sense a relief of congestion on this side of the campus, I could see how they would maybe change direction on how they get to and from the campus.
But that was definitely in, in the mind of the district moving forward with this project, right, that that?
Yes, that we were going to alleviate congestion at the front of the campus, yes.
Mr. Diaz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I I don't, again, I'm not an engineer, but you're just, you're closing one road and just moving it over. How, you've got congestion now and you just move it over, you're still gonna have congestion, are you?
So it's, it's, in addition to being able to have the traffic signal to deter, defer traffic, and I didn't mention that earlier. So Eckert Road and John Marshall will be a a fully uh signalized intersection, it only has three legs of the intersection now. But one hundred and twenty parking stalls in that new parking lot that they don't currently have will be able to get one hundred and twenty vehicles off of the public roadways. So that's a substantial number that you're able to get off the public roadways in the campus while they wait to pick up their child and then move on.
So that, that road that you're, that you're now going to build, is it only gonna be a one-way in or is it gonna be a?
It is a, it it's a two-way road, John Marshall.
No, 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 but the one that you're now gonna make going into the, to the?
That, that, yes, the one that you see off to the kind of right-hand side, that that'll be the extension of John Marshall Drive.
So it would be, so it's just one-way in or you're gonna have both going?
It's, it's a.
You're gonna have a two-way?
Two-way drive, yes, sir.
Okay.
But they're all going one direction, correct?
Yes, once you get up to Lobo Lane, it is one direction, uh, from the right-hand side of your screen to the left-hand side.
The left-hand side?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So that's heading west?
Uh, I'm gonna say planned west, so yes, on on the sheet you see here, it is planned west.
Okay, right, Mr. Yonell?
This picture we have in front of us, we have two what look like somewhat like squares at the bottom of the picture, sort of in the center there, at the edge of the parking lot. Two squares, just a rectangle.
Yeah, one looks like an inner, like the intersection on Eckert, probably, Marsh- John Marshall and Eckert.
Yeah, what are those?
That, that, that's, that rectangle right there, that with the red dot?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I can't see the red dot on my screen, I mean, okay.
Is it that one?
Yes, sir, that's one of them.
With the increase in impervious cover associated with the parking areas that we're proposing here, we need to slow down the stormwater, uh, leaving the site as to not impact the existing City of San Antonio infrastructure. So we are proposing stormwater detention on the property to slow down that stormwater.
Okay, so what's?
That's what that block is, yes.
So what's the one right below it? The ne- the other little square?
Just below it until the right.
This, this one here?
Intersection.
So this is the intersection of, this is Eckert Road here.
Okay.
And then this is John Marshall Road here.
Okay.
And then this portion is the new extension of John Marshall.
And then to the right of that picture, what is that?
So.
That open land, what is that?
Yeah, so this is our stormwater pollution prevention background that you see here on the screen. So this is just proposing where the contractor could use a concrete washout pit, which is the small one, and a staging area on the right. I will tell you that I think their current logistic plan is to continue to stage over here on this side of the campus, back here in the, I think that's the current parent, uh, teacher parking lot.
Yeah, over near the band hall, probably, yeah.
Yes, I mean, they do have the option of storing some materials here, but they are currently, you know, staging on this side of the site over here.
Well, actually, what I meant was this big blank area, the big white area, what is that?
That big open field there?
It's, it's an existing soccer field and also a a discus and shot put.
If I may, Mr. Galar, in the future, when we have these kind of, if we could have some names on what this thing is, there, there's a whole lot of information here that I don't understand what they're telling me. And if we could have something in pedestrian language, so to speak, and the direction of north, we don't, I don't see the direction of north on here, that would be helpful. You try to read some of these things, it's, I guess we're supposed to have it for some reason, but I I don't know how to read it. We need some education on it somehow.
You, you, so you're talking like some kind of key with orientation, right?
But what are we supposed to do with it?
Well, so the thing about it is, is this is that, um, this is learning how to read maps, right, plans. And so your focus isn't those boxes, your focus isn't, like, that's not what you're here, you're here to look at whether or not you need, need a parking lot, right? Like, whether or not you're re- gonna replat the land for the parking lot, that's the conversation this evening. That's what y'all should be discussing. And so sometimes I think y'all get into the weeds of like, what is this little square and that little dot? It's engineer stuff.
Well, we're getting it in the, in the, in our packet.
That's not what you're just, right, because we're trying to, we we try to give you everything for those that understand plans, read plans and all of that. And so your discussion this evening, though, if it, if. discussion this evening, though, if, 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 if that's an issue, then we can just give you an aerial and show you the aerial view and be like, this is gonna be a parking lot. We just provide that because everybody else, some other people like to see all of that, but it, this evening, it's not what, whether or not the traffic flow's gonna be that way, how it's gonna flow, it was, we're getting an extension of the parking lot. What we were told by John Marshall originally was, parents just stop, no matter how much they tell them to keep moving, without a police officer being out there to move the traffic flow, parents just wait for their kid to get off, get on, sometimes they're having a conversation in the car, sometimes they're not, sometimes some parents are like, I pay for this school, I can wait here all day if I want to, conversation, and that's what was happening. And so they feel like if parents have to wait, there's now an additional 120 spots they'll be able to move to park and wait for their student.
Okay.
So, this is just replating the land in order to make that parking lot happen. The conversation of the street, the traffic flow, happened with the city council, um, and, and the, and the engineers and all of that, really in-depth in July, and in October, and then again in November. Um, and so this is more of the conversation of replating that parking lot, that's what the conversation is this evening. So I just wanna make sure we stay on?
Yeah, I appreciate you refocusing the, the agenda item here. All right, well, very good. Do you have anything else you feel you needed to add to?
Uh, no, not at this time, but I'm more than happy to point out anything else and answer any other questions.
Okay, okay. All right, um, this is the public portion, I guess, any other questions? Mister, Mister Byron, is that?
Byron Woodworth, so just a point of clarification, I understand what we're trying to accomplish, I live right behind the school, and I get to enjoy that every day.
Sir, can you get up on the mic so we can make sure it's being documented?
So, I, again, we, we live right behind the school, so we?
Way tall.
Yes, it's tall. Is the mic on?
Okay. So, I understand, so, this is contingent on those 120 spaces, for the parents to pull into those spaces, wait for their kid, their kids, and then depart out, um, on Bluebird, correct? Or I guess they can go back to John Marshall?
They will only be able to go to John Marshall.
They'll only be able to go to John Marshall, okay. Just a comment from my observation, living there for 14 years, enforcement is pretty lax when they have games, JVs, all along those streets, people park illegally in the no-parking zones. I quit calling the non-emergency number a, a year or two ago, um, but probably 50 cars a day will park illegally, which makes it very dangerous to drive down that street, so. If they're gonna enforce, nobody's stopping, that's great, it'll work, if they don't, it's gonna, not gonna help much.
Yeah, it would seem that, well, it's on the other side of the campus, so if it's like after-school sporting events, I, I'm not sure if that would, how, how often that would be enforced, or if there would be campus police there to, to deal with that, but I've seen that myself, um, yeah, so.
And, and when you're going down the road, and the cars are parked right on the edge of the road, they open their doors, they're opening their doors into traffic, and that's, that's the scary part, you're really, even, it's 20, it's being limited to 20, of course, but still, it's pretty scary, so anyway, I'll, I'll sit down.
Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate your comment.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one more question.
Okay, um, yeah, go, go ahead, Mr. Yarnell.
On page one, uh, one of five?
Make sure you're on the mic, sir.
I'm sorry.
On page one of five, it shows the plat to the left, um, it's in our, it shows the?
That one?
Plats, no?
That one?
No?
Is it in a PowerPoint? Oh, that was, that's not in a power, that's not in a PowerPoint, that's in the plant, the packet. What's your question?
This box that they've created here seems to go through some of these lots. Some of the lots are in, within this box, this dotted line? Um, this is information we received, so what are we supposed to do with this?
Okay, so, again, we provide you all of the information, the whole site packet plan, so you have it. If you have very detailed questions about boxes and circles, I'm here for you, come before the meeting, me and you will sit there and we can go through page by page, if you would like to, but for the purposes of tonight's meeting, all we're here to discuss is whether or not y'all are going to approve replating the property for the parking lot. So if you have anything in your packet, ever, in a council packet, I'm, I am here, I live here half the time, 360, I'll meet you on a Saturday morning, we can have coffee if you want to, we can go through whatever packet information for zoning commission, planning and zoning, if you feel that you need more information on anything, but for tonight's purposes, all we're here to discuss is the replating of that property, 'cause I don't know what you, I would have to pull up the packet to see what it is that you're referring to. They're not going to take somebody else's land or lot, there's not gonna take any easement, that would require a whole separate agenda item.
Okay.
Okay, what's, is there another question from the public? Yeah, if you can give us your name, where you live?
Hello, Terry Woodworth, uh, I live in Monte Robles, married to that incredible man right there. Um, my question is more around the 120 parking spots that will be created, which is great, enforcement, do we have commitment that someone's gonna be out there directing people to utilize this space? How will it be enforced? 'Cause more parking spots that are not used?
I think that, that this is the issue we're having, and I think it's an issue for us here on the dais as well, is that we're not really here to deal with that, um, we're just here to approve a plat, and so there were?
Completely understand, I just wanna make sure it's on the record.
Sure, absolutely.
The, the concerns of the community.
Yeah, absolutely, and you know, and ev, any concern, any rather, kinda related or not related, we want to hear them, I'm not trying to be dismissive, Mr. Yarnell, and I know it's coming across that way, um, but we try to stay on topic for the vote, but from the general public that are coming out this evening, I wanna hear all of your concerns. And I know enforcement is a huge issue out there, and we go back and forth with Northside all the time on who's responsible for what, and, and who can be where, um, and we can't be everywhere, I can't send my entire police force to manage the school, right? Everybody would know, like, oh, all of the Leon Valley Police Force is over there managing traffic, let's go rob, you know, Randolph Brooks, you know? So we try really hard to do a lot of coordination with Northside Independent School District. My understanding from them, when we had this discussion, is as the, at the beginning, during the learning phase of the way this is going to flow, they have agreed to have people assisting, whether it's police officers or school staff, to teach people how to kinda use it, is the idea.
Okay.
Um, and then we're out there for the public roadways down, uh, you know, further down John Marshall Drive, into Thunderbird, um, anything that's considered a city public, uh, thoroughfare, when we get this up and running and the construction phase is done and we're teaching everybody, our guys will also be out there those first few weeks to kinda hopefully get the pattern down. Um, as far as parking and any of that is concerned, still continue to call the non-emergency number, and I'll make sure that the police department, especially during football season, you know, goes out there, there's a reason that there are no parking, um, we just got, you know, slammed a few weeks ago, 'cause we did a whole run-through and did a no parking, we did a lot of parking violations, and then a lot of members of the community weren't happy that we did parking violations, and so, um, I think that's what typically happens during especially sporting events, um, is that we do do parking violations, and then I get a whole group of people not happy that we did a parking violation, 'cause there's nowhere to park. So we're hoping this helps, we're, I mean, I, I don't think it's gonna be a 100%, like, don't get me on record saying this is gonna be the most effective thing in the world, but I do think it'll provide some, some assistance.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Sir? I've seen you before.
I've been around for 40 years, so. I'm Craig Bassett, I'm at 6746 Thunderbird Drive, so I'm?
It's over here somewhere, yeah.
I'm right there. Um, how, how is this, and when you move, um, this is probably a question over for the engineers, if it's moved over to John Marshall and it goes all the way through, how will it improve or reduce the traffic flow through the subdivision? Because my concern is, is that if it, the, the closer it gets to making it a straight shot from Eckert to Heebner, um, that will just increase the flow going through the, our subdivision, and so it passes by some of the people that, that are right here.
I mean, I don't know, he can, he can probably speak to this, too, this was a big conversation at the beginning, uh, what I heard is it's gonna be a Speedway, it's gonna be a racetrack, you know, people are, that's, you know, um, we said we were gonna wait to watch and see how the traffic flowed first, see driver behavior, and then determine if we need any traffic calming devices in the area to help slow down that speed, was what we discussed, but I don't know if y'all have?
Rather have, not have traffic calming?
Sean Smith back again, we, we did not see a difference in the turning movement counts in the existing to the proposed condition on the intersections on the opposite side on Heebner Road. So the, the flow is coming in using the use that's up there, which is John Marshall High School, and then leaving back in the direction that they came, so we, we did not necessarily see a increased, uh, it's not possible to model something like that, you, you can plug it in to model something like that, but if it's not actually occurring, it's, it's not an impact, uh, that this is, this is creating, so, as far as the realignment of it, um, the flow of traffic, just if I could, you know, would, would, would come in off Eckert Road, come up through here, you know, utilize this additional, uh, lane to pickup drop-off, and then exit down Bluebird Lane, if you come in and you are going to be parking, you can utilize this bank of parking here, and then exit back out John Marshall Drive. So utilizing this parking area in this, and then using this exit only to get back to Eckert Road, is a, is directing that traffic back to this intersection here, and not to this exit-only intersection, which this is currently an exit-only here.
Very good, appreciate it. All right, it is 7:31, and I'll close the public portion of this item, and I would entertain a motion on the approval of the plating of, of these?
Mr. Chairman, I motion to approve 4.1, as it is written in our agenda.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Okay, uh, very good, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Very good, thank, thank you. So let's see, we, oh, yeah, I need to read this, no, I don't need to read this number two, okay, very good. All right, so 4-2 under new business has been withdrawn, all right, thank you, appreciate that. All right, it is, um, oh my god, I'm blind. It is 7:32, and I'll adjourn this meeting, thank you.